Want to call the meeting to order?
Hi, the time is 6:04 and we'll call the Human Relations Commission meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, let's do roll call. Demetra Stal Nash.
Present.
Nona Cohen Bowman. Brandon Green.
Present.
Courtney Davis.
Present.
Melvin Jones. Jerome Maduris.
Present.
And Marissa Sarafino. Report from the Secretary, I just have one thing to report out. Circling back on the request that was made at the last meeting on July 23rd regarding touring the Navigation Center, I did reach out to the City Manager's Office and I was told that the tours happened prior to the opening of the center and that now that the center's occupied, they are no longer giving tours. However, the Broadway project is slated to open in the future, there's no official date yet, but once we get more word on that, we can talk to the Manager's Office about getting some tours before they open up.
I still would like to see the Navigation Center, I have had reports on the Navigation Center with some concerns and as Human Relations Commissioners, I think that it would be nice if we could go tour and see what it's all about.
I would agree with that, I've had some interests in it even before I was part of this commission just because a lot of my work that I do as an attorney is around homelessness and other things, so I've had some personal interests, but that interest has definitely peaked being a part of this particular commission.
Yeah, oh, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
I would just echo exactly what the other Commissioners have stated, it's important for us to understand what's going on with our residents who are in the Navigation Center, to understand how the Navigation Center is functioning and how they're responding to that environment and so that is an important factor for us to tap into.
Yeah, so as I understand that the issue is with it occupied, there are privacy concerns with the people who are, you know, living there essentially and so we could maybe see if there are some alternatives, maybe some common areas could be toured or maybe there's someone you could speak to to get the information without actually walking through the facility, but so that's the concern and that was the reason that the response was a no, but let's see if maybe there's some alternative that would allow for that interaction and for you to get that information without.
We'd appreciate that very much.
And it seems like, you know, at least with regard to the privacy concerns, that there could either be, you know, something that, you know, residents could opt in to or be asked or something that we could sign with regard to not disclosing any personal information or something that would allow for navigating around those particular concerns. I think, of course, you know, being able to go to a common area or, you know, talk to people there might give some indication as to the functionality and what's happening there, but it seems like there could potentially be some level of process to alleviate the concerns with regard to the privacy issue.
Yeah, we can inquire, my understanding is that people don't have individual living spaces in the Navigation Center, I haven't seen it myself, but so that would make it more challenging to get some kind of a waiver or permission, but we can ask and see what's possible.
Report from Councilmember Matulik, liaison to the Commission.
Good evening, Vice Chair Stal Nash, and congratulations to Vice Chair Stal Nash and Commissioner Davis for your reappointments and then for our newly appointed Commissioners, Commissioner Maduris and Commissioner Green, congratulations. So for, especially for the first timers, a friendly reminder, especially for the existing Commissioners, past Commissioners, is that each Commission has a budget that's allocated to each Commission of $1,000 and so you can use those funds when you put a work plan together and identify how you plan to use that, for example, if you plan to take it in some educational courses or if there is any professional development that may be associated with Human Relations or if there's a way that you guys want to identify how to reach out to the community, hold any town halls or anything, if there's any costs associated with that, those are the type of things that if you, when you, once you put a work plan together as a group and the staff can support you putting that work plan together, then that would come in front of the City Council for the final approval and that way you can move forward with how to move a lot of things that you may have ideas and great plans for. So, and as another reminder for this Commissions and all Commissions and Boards within the City of Vallejo, the Commissions are a recommendation body to the City Council, so all conversations here are privy to, or are able to be brought in front of the City Council for any recommendations you have so that we can have a conversation at the City Council level to discuss whatever issue or item that may be and then we can move forward with how we as a Council may move forward with that, so. And then I will be speaking to a lot of the action items here for, because some of the items have come up in front of our City Council and I will look forward to speaking to that and I would like to welcome Commissioner Jones for joining us right now and thank you for, thank you for joining us in this inclement weather, I think our first rain of the season, so. So, any questions at this point?
Is it possible to get badges for the New Years for all the new people and all of us to get?
So my understanding when we put all the Commissions and Boards together, badges were a part of that, I don't think, I think badges and I'm not sure about business cards, but I, so not the business, but the badges were supposed to be part of the new allocation for each and every Commission and Board, so that should be, and I'm surprised that didn't happen last year because that's when we did move that.
Yeah, mine's expired, it says June 2025.
So you have an expiration date on your badge itself, interesting, okay.
The term is on there.
Okay.
I'll follow up with them.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll work with staff to make sure that everybody gets a updated badge and especially for the new Commissioners to have that, thank you for that question.
This is perhaps a silly question, maybe not, but with regard to being able to interface with or meet with folks from some of the other Commission bodies, because is, what is the process for?
So that's a great question, so for example, so I'm also the liaison to the Planning Commission and to the, and then I work very closely with Councilmember Matias who's on the Economic Development, so we've, we're actually approaching a, an idea of the fact that the Planning Commission and the Economic Development kind of go hand in hand in trying to move the city forward, so we're trying to get, the last conversation was putting subcommittees together, how, so those two Commissions can kind of have a small subcommittee to talk about, I think we're still working that out through the City Attorney's Office of how we can officially move something like that forward, but those are the type of things, I think you can always have a, I think informal conversations with other Commissioners from other Boards and stuff like that, but nothing from, and I think you each will go through that through your Brown Act training of how to avoid Brown Act violations and things of that nature, so there's certain logistical and, and I think City Attorney Knight can kind of speak to that at some point for, of what the, what the protocols are of how to interact with other Commissions, but from a, from an informal standpoint, you as citizens can always interact with other Commissions.
Yeah, the Brown Act part was, was part of the consideration from my question just because something like the Economic Development Commission, for example, obviously has its body of work would be relevant to things relevant to the community on the topical things that we're looking at like houselessness and like all those different things, they intersect and because generally people aren't able to attend all of the Commission meetings to be to get that filtering of information, if we are approaching conversations with the public writ large, it might be helpful to be able to be to bring in some of that information and receive feedback as that information intersects with the various issues that the community is facing.
So for very specific questions like that and Brown Act questions, why don't you either give me a call or shoot me an email and we can discuss kind of what you're thinking of more specifically and how we could work through that with the Brown Act?
Any other great questions at this time from anyone?
No, and thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner reports, do we have any Commissioners that would like to report out?
I do, and did you get a chance to print out those flyers by any chance, if you can pass it to the Commissioners so to have something tangible to look at while we, I go through the process, so on October 11th, our organization has partnered with a statewide advocacy organization around first response transformation and so on October 11th, we're going to hold a, our final community forum to report out on the previous, three previous deliberation sessions that we held here in the City of Vallejo. And so, with regards to that, there's a QR code that is located at the bottom of the flyer and we ask that you share it with your network of family members, community members, neighbors to join us in this very important conversation. The location, the exact location will be sent once registration is held or once we receive the registration, we want to make sure that this discussion is a safe discussion as we understand the complexities that are existing in today's present time and so with that, yeah, we're looking at how do we want our, how does the community see first response within the City of Vallejo based off of what was reported out by many of the residents that we've been at work in community with and so what do we do with that information moving forward to influence, you know, policy change or even our own city's mobile crisis team, iHeart initiative and so please let me know if you have any questions with regards to this.
And then just for any members of the public, there are copies available on the back of that flyer if you would like to see one.
Has, has, are these conversations, or has there been any conversation about how the responses from the community forum will or potentially impact the other conversations around the, I know there's the sort of third party audit that's been happening, so is there any intersection between those and then I think you said this is the third one of these, is there any, or the fourth, are there any sort of notes or high line sort of issues that have come forth from the previous three that might give us some grounding as to what's been discussed?
That is a great question and yes, and so that's the purpose of this conversation is to report out on those deliverables and as far as the external evaluation team, the reform efforts that are taking place in our city, there is a, we will invite them to observe but not necessarily participate, so they need to understand what's working when it comes to this initiative, what's not working, this is what the community is seeing or saying, what those touchpoints look like or don't look like and what next steps they would want iHeart to really evolve as. Thank you for that question.
So the question I have is kind of two-pronged, first, are there any plans of having any additional forms outside of this singular one and then the second that I would have is how else are you intending on spreading it out, as in are there going to be any digital efforts as well because sometimes people may not have the availability, right, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, a lot of people are at work and if not that, maybe they're a little shy and they don't want to be in person and they're much prefer to be behind a screen providing answers or suggestions.
It's a great question, so the 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, so that is a Saturday and so we were trying to make it at least as welcoming or inclusive as possible and also too, the reason why we had a 9:00 AM is because the latter time that we initially identified was, the room wasn't available and so it, we're not able to hold it at that time and you know how difficult it is to try to get a team together with different scheduling and so this was, we wanted just to continue with this date and move it forward. As far as the electronic access goes, so let me give a little background information and so we held three deliberation sessions, one mock session back in 2023, two of them were in English and one is in Spanish, the Spanish-speaking one because again, like I stated, we want to ensure the safety of our residents and a lot of folks have acknowledged or expressed concerns around that, we have, we're going to have, hold a separate session with, regarding the same information, the same report out but on a electronic, like a Zoom conversation, but as far as the, 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 the October 11th session, I don't believe the location where we're at is able to have that type of, doesn't have that kind of access unfortunately and so that, that definitely is something that, but they can follow up with the team should they want more information and this is where we, as a Human Relations Commission, what do we do with this information, right, we can take this information and really have additional conversations with the community considering that is, we need to get out there and we can use this as a framework to address the public safety challenges that many of our residents are wanting to, are speaking of and so I hope I answered your question, okay.
Is it possible to have this flyer at the Waterfront Festival?
Absolutely, wherever we, we're doing, wherever you feel we need to place these flyers, if you are connected to an organization, your workplace, your friends, your neighborhoods, we are wanting to get the word out in the community.
And the senior center?
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm sorry, just one last question related to the question that was asked previously in terms of would it be possible at all to, to create, you know, a set of or series of open-ended questions that, you know, or form that could be accessible via QR code and it could be, you know, either some sort of flyer or some sort of poster or something could be, could be created so it could, it could like, let's say live at the farmer's market or something and people who are there could scan the thing and they could answer the questions so that there's various places for, for input since that gets, you know, foot traffic and, you know, that kind of thing or even, you know, a similar thing, you know, they could, you know, live on a, on a stand in front of the entrance to the ferry, you know, where like it's a bunch of people who are commuting and there, there's foot traffic there as well.
I can take that back to the team and, you know, so that when we, is it, are you asking like post this deliberation or, or while, on October 11th, have that available so that folks can continue feeding the conversation?
I think either pre or post is just, I just, because there's places where people are already gather and there's already substantial foot traffic and people have cell phones, like if they could scan and be able to, you know, answer the phone, answer from their, their phone to, you know, input with the series of, of open-ended questions and even maybe a question about is there anything on here that you want there to be awareness about that wasn't asked and then people can have the opportunity to answer in that manner.
To add on to that as well, that is more or less the direction I was going with my initial question because I'm even thinking of something along the lines of like a, just like a link that you can access on the internet at any point on social media or something like that because I feel that yes, people get around, people have foot traffic, but at the same time, a lot of people stay in the house, so having that digital access via a link on social media or website or whatnot, I think would be very helpful so that again, with open-ended questions or some sort of survey that we can constantly tabulate more and more responses.
I definitely believe we can do that and I, and as we continue to dive into our agenda, one of the lifts that I would want to recommend is that our, our Commission has a website available so that we can attach that QR code and for any kind of submissions to our Commission that we can further discuss and, and, and address, then we're capturing it through there, but for right now, it could live on our website considering that, on Tabby Mom's website considering that we, our organization partnered with Public Health Advocates, but that's not a permanent home for that considering we're transitioning out of that work and so it's most appropriate if we have something standard for the Commission to hold that information.
Is it possible to have this flyer at the back table for the City Council meetings?
I'm not sure if that's a question for me or not, I mean, yeah, I mean, you can bring in copies and put them back there.
I think that would be, I think that's appropriate, I think that's a question that we would just want to confirm with Dawn Abramson, our City Clerk, to find out what is allowed and distributable at our City Council meetings because I know there's agendas attached to that along with other information, so I, we can always ask.
If it, if not on the back table, how about outside on your, isn't that an informational table that's outside the door?
Let me, let me get that answer from Dawn and then.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Just, just to clarify, are we discussing the flyer that you have, are we discussing about the, because I know we had the flyer for the Human Relations Commission that we gave out last year for the Waterfront Festival, are we discussing that, are we discussing this, okay, thank you for that and hello, nice to see you.
Through the, through the chair, if I could add one other item from a informational distribution standpoint, you can always reach out to our public information team because we have our, the Vallejo Weekly has ways to promote this and I think that goes citywide to whoever's registered, has their email registered with the City of Vallejo, they get that on a regular basis, that's another way that I think is that many people may not see often, but so, and this is also encouraging to other members, your friends, neighbors, other family members to register with the Vallejo Weekly so they can get these weekly informational items like. to register with the Vallejo Weekly so they can get these weekly informational items like this. That's great information to know, so.
Sorry, I'm going to add one more thing. With regards to, you know, who all would be in the room, right? We want, we want everyone in the room. But definitely looking at who has had touchpoints with this, with I Heart? And what is that experience, right? Because that's a voice that can be overshadowed with all the other language and news that comes out about I Heart. And so we want to hear about what that experience is, whether it's the residents themselves or whether it's organizations that are operating, have leveraged, used I Heart, or even hospital-based systems. What is that, like, what does that picture? What, what's happening when the team has came out and responded? So.
I just tried to register and it said the site wasn't available.
I will get back to the team. I can't believe that. We talked about that earlier today. I said, have this together.
Thank you for working on that.
Okay, I have a report. On our, at our last meeting, we were given permission, Ms. Serafino and Mel Jones and I, to meet with Joey Carson, Carson Natus on the homeless needs. And unfortunately, Marissa was in a car accident and she was not able to attend. But Mel and I did. And we went over the needs and with Joey. And the main things that he discussed with us, as he discussed with the homeless, was with these sweeps that are continuing, the personal items are not being kept. They're being thrown away. And we want to see if maybe we can work on that with whoever to see about getting their items saved. As you know, Vallejo Together, they're the ones who give them the tents and the sleeping bags to keep them in shelter. And it's very hard for us to come up with the money to do that. And then if they're just being thrown away, maybe we can work on something that they wouldn't be thrown away and they could come back and get them at a later date. But I think it's really sad that the only belongings that they get, they're being tossed. So that was one of his issues. And.
Maybe this is for the, the city attorney. Do you know what the, and maybe we should discuss it offline. But do you know what the bag and tag is, what the official bag and tag policy is for the city as it relates to these items?
Yeah, so I don't have the specific policy off the top of my head, but we do not throw things away. We do store the, the items for a period of time. There is sometimes disputes over whether an item is trash or whether it's actually appropriately a belonging. Certainly, our interest is in minimizing the city's liability and storing things as much as possible. If there were particular instances that he mentions, those are things that you can forward to us and we can look at. But we do have a process in place for storing those.
Sorry, I have a question. What if they're not there? When the, when, when it happens, does it still get, does it still get bagged up or does it get thrown away?
No, it still gets stored.
Where are these items stored?
It depends on the item. It depends on the nature. But I don't have the location off the top of my head either. So different types of things are appropriate for different kinds of storage.
And I know one of the things just in why my own personal work in professional capacity, having worked at ACLU and other places that litigated around these things, that a lot of times when a sweep happens, particularly when it comes to personal items that are very, very meaningful to someone but might seem insignificant to someone from outside or important documents that depending upon how the sweep occurs, that those things can, can be very easily destroyed. And then obviously very difficult for people to then get back. But there's also usually some difficulty in the person on the receiving end of their property being taken and bagged and tagged and them not properly understanding the, the process by which to identify their items. And then sometimes even if they can, because oftentimes they don't have receipts or other sort of ownership identifying documentation that it is also sometimes difficult for folks to get their, their items back. So for my own personal edification, if, if you'd be to point us to the policy just so we can have some familiarity, so if we have any of these conversations in the future that we're, have some awareness, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah, I can distribute copies of that.
Yes, because in this meeting, there was several that their items were not returned to them. So, and that's a problem. I'd like to see more, Vallejo Together has been working with the homeless for many years. And we would be happy to assist when we know of the sweeps, which normally our ladies are usually there. But we can help them so it's not such a traumatic experience. Because after the meeting that we had down in the Vallejo Room, that was the biggest concern with the homeless is that they're just being swept to another piece of dirt. So it's, and that they're going to go back to the same familiarity if there's nothing there for them. So it, to me, it's very important and to others and to them that we make sure that their items get back to them. So, and we also discussed the navigation center that I, they believe that it's 75 that are in, that are filled. And I think it's 125 that will fill it. But we wanted to know who's overseeing the navigation center? The success rate with the resources that are provided? Because some of the, some of them said that the food distribution was not as it was in the beginning. So we'd like to know who is overseeing the navigation center? And we'd also like to know what the cost of the sweeps are. How much is it costing the city to sweep their, our homeless? And is there a schedule that's, that is going on? And really, what is the goal? What is the solution? What's the follow-up at the navigation center? Are there any success stories? Six months a year? Who's the staff liaison? So if it's the assistant city manager, that's what we were told, maybe we can meet with them. But, you know, the suggestions were build more affordable housing, harm reduction, leave them where they're at, use an outreach team, porta-potties and dumpsters, keep police out of it and, because they shine lights on them to harass them, contact I Heart and make sure that are all, that are all accepted into the navigation center. There was also some talk about maybe not people as like Mr. Jones here, as if he was in a wheelchair, that they really didn't shine highly on that. So we kind of want accountability for our navigation center to make sure that all are welcome, all are respected, and that who's overseeing them. That's kind of why when we weren't, we were told that we couldn't go on a tour, we were like, well, why? We'd love to see the success stories. And I think it would be good in the newspaper to have a success story for the navigation to make sure that we're on the right track. Because as we all know, not everybody's going to stay in the navigation center because of the rules. But we do want the success stories for everyone to be able to be respected and allowed in the navigation center.
Is it Five Keys that runs? That's, didn't we say that? I think, isn't that who we said is in charge of, or runs it?
That sounds familiar, but that's not something I personally work on, so I don't know.
And then Natalie Peterson is, would be our point person, correct, on that? Okay. And, and more, sorry, one other question. No, it's no families there, right? It's just, it's single adults. Okay, okay.
No, there's no families there.
Will the Broadway project house families?
Mr. Matula?
Similar to the navigation center, they do have intake requirements. So I, I, off the top of my head, I don't know for sure. Because I, we've got, since we have a couple of those projects in there, it kind of meshes together. So, so from a, I think Natalie would be the person to answer that of what the, the true logistical details are of, of, of that intake process. Because I know they have to go through, Resource Connect is, is part of that whole process. And so they go through that whole vetting process of if they qualify and if they're able to move in. And, and there's actually a list on there, of, of, of priority list, so to say, of who signs up. And, and that's where I Heart comes into play to where they're helping to provide that intake list and, and move through that in an efficient and effective and equitable way. So.
Right, that's through Dre at Resource.
Correct, correct, Dre Richardson.
So we can actually reach out to him and get an answer probably a little bit better?
He could provide more information at least, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you still reporting out? Are you still reporting? Are you still on your, Commissioner?
No, I think I asked all my questions. We'll just see how many answers we get.
I have a report also, if, if there's any, if there's no other questions. And so I was, unfortunately, didn't get to make that meeting. So I was in an inconvenient accident right there in front of Six Flags where all that construction's going on. And so I have to have surgery on my finger, but, you know, it could have been worse. So, but I will say, so I did do a little research. I said I was going to do research on other human relations commissions. Hi, I'm Ms. Serafino and it's nice to see you guys. I researched you guys before you guys came in. I think you guys are cool, so. Thank you. You're welcome. So I just want to also give a big shout out. And today at the Board of Supervisors meetings, or not today, it was Tuesday, they, they okayed the sheriffs coming in, which I'm a big supporter of to help the VPD. And hopefully there'll be less vulnerables to attend to because of that next year, so. But I did, what I did was I was going to look at other Human Relation Commission meetings just to see what it is that they're doing. I wanted to go actually see a couple of them in person. But one that I did see online that I just came across is Boulder, Colorado, had a retreat, they called it. They didn't go to anywhere fancy and, you know, stay at a hotel or anything. But they had a day where their Human Relations Commission got together. And what they did was they discussed past work that the Human Relations Commission did in their city. They, sorry here, they, what they discussed was assessment of last, last year's accomplishments and challenges, strategic planning for upcoming years, priorities, goals. I know we kind of did that in our work plan. Community engagement strategies, such as how to better connect with, you know, the community. They also discussed what each, individually what their goals were to be on the commission. It also went over what the actual rules, protocols, what you can and can't do. It may be more in a little depth than we're able to do in, in, you know, something like this. And then, so I'm not really sure, they called it a retreat on, you know, and it was just like a commission meeting, but it was more, it was a little more not so formal, you know? So I'm not really sure if that's something we would want to consider or even take a look at. Because I know we've had meetings or talked about maybe going into discussions as far as like, understanding some of the rules, you know, and extending, having to agendize to agendize, you know? But, and, and what are rules? Because I know we can only meet so much on that, like, so I know we have the Waterfront Festival coming up again. And it can only be so many of us there at a time in the capacity of representing the Human Relations Commission, correct? It's only three?
Right, yeah, it's less than a quorum.
Sorry, so that's all I was going to say is I was just going to, I'll have a little more information on that as I, I'm going to go and, you know, attend a couple more and just see, you know, what it is that they're doing. I noticed one, they use their budget for a lot more, like they were saying, being more noticeable to the public through social media. Rather than, I feel like if, if we had a social media account, like, that maybe we could get more people understanding what it is that we do, that they're able to come here and discuss their issues with us if they need to, making us be more visible so that they can recognize us as, hey, there's a commissioner. Let me go tell her what I've got going on or what my concerns are. So that's just what my report is. And I'll have more on the next meeting.
Thank you. I also went to the I Heart seminar. I wanted to say that. They were at a church around the corner from our church. There's like five churches that are all in the same group. And it was very interesting. I know it's on our agenda to maybe have them come. So I think that it would be very educational for us to really see what I Heart is about and how the affiliation with the Police Department. Because that's the whole thing on response is if you're going to call the police or you're going to call I Heart. And the I Heart rules that they have to abide by are very interesting. So I think that it is on here for us to invite them to our commission's meeting. And I think it would be beneficial. And it was very well presented by the young man who did it.
Oh, so I did that? I invited Katie? I forgot. That was, and Katie said, whenever our next meeting is, let her know and she'll be here to, to represent I Heart. I guess she's the data analysis, I believe. She was on the, she was in the Citizens Academy with me. But she said she'll come here and give a, a presentation. I just got to tell her when our next meeting is and she'll be here.
I just want to add one more thing. So I appreciate you actually bringing up the, the difference of commissions, HRC commissions. And I, and I can appreciate you looking all the way to Boulder. But there are some commissions, HRC commissions, within our local area that are doing some things too, that we can tap into to understand what are the, what, what are the similarities that they're, that, that's in, that they're doing in their cities with regards to like population, the complexities of the challenges that we're seeing. So I want us to really hone in on even looking at it locally. And then we can spread our antennas out. But when we spread our antennas so far out, then we kind of get disconnected.
So I, I'm, I was going to go to Cocoa County's meeting, but they, they do it every quarter like us. So they, so it just didn't click in for the time. And then Palo Alto was another one. And then Richmond, that was the other one, which is Cocoa County. But I guess Cocoa County has a Cocoa County one and a City of Richmond one, so. But just so you know, that wasn't.
Yep, yeah, for sure. And then you did mention, I think as we continue going through the agenda and looking at the, the framework and having a discussion around the framework, there, a lot of the points that you mentioned are living in that potential framework. So I appreciate you actually bringing that up.
Okay, item five, community forum. Do we have any speakers, Manny?
Through the chair, currently do not have any members of the public signed up for the community forum. In the meantime, feel free to carry on with the agenda. There's a timer on the top left corner of the screen for interested parties to sign up for the community forum. Once that timer concludes, if anybody signs up, I'll be sure to let you know.
Thank you. Item six, selection of chairperson and vice chairperson. So do we have any nominations for the chairperson?
I'd like to nominate Courtney Davis as chair.
Second.
Let me take a roll call vote. Demetra Stoll-Nash?
Aye.
Brandon Green?
Aye.
Courtney Davis?
Aye.
Melvin Jones?
Aye.
Darrell Maderas?
Aye.
Marissa Serafino?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Nona Cohen-Brown absent. Moving on to the vice chair, do I have a nomination?
I think Ms., can, no, does it have to be someone different? Ms. Nash, can she do it again or does it have to be? I would nominate Ms. Nash to carry on as the vice chair.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, let me take a roll call vote. Demetra Stoll-Nash?
Aye.
Brandon Green?
Aye.
Aye.
Courtney Davis?
Aye.
Melvin Jones?
Aye.
Jerel Maderas?
Aye.
And Marissa Serafino?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Nona Cohen-Bowen absent. Thank you. Congratulations. Moving on to the consent calendar and approval of the agenda. Approval of minutes from July 23, 2025, regular meeting. Can we make a motion?
I motion to accept the minutes from that meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call voting. Demetra Stahl-Nash?
Aye.
Brandon Green?
Courtney Davis? Aye.
Melvin Jones?
Aye.
Jerel Maderas?
Aye.
And Marissa Serafino?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Nona Cohen-Bowen absent. Action items, item 8A. Commissioner attendance and tabling at upcoming city events, including Waterfront Weekend and Unity Day. Has Unity passed? You knew.
So if, would now be the time where I bring up, I know, so last year we had a bunch of flyers printed up, and it basically gave a small, do you remember those? It was just a small, like, brief description of what we do, and it had our names on the back. I, I'm sure we don't have any more from, you know, because I know we have a budget, so I would like to see about, maybe updating them a little bit, and then, but I know we don't have a lot of time, right, because the Waterfront Festival is in, bless you, in October, is that when the Waterfront Festival is? So we don't have enough time to probably try to, you know, fancy it, or, you know, but I know that we got them print, he got them printed for us, but we had to do it like a month ahead of time to get them in time.
It was the, the little cards, or, oh, the trifold?
It was a tri, yeah, it was a trifold.
Okay.
Yeah, and it, it updated with all the, you know, new commissioners at the time, and, but I know that, I think our budget's a thousand, I'm not really sure how much it cost to print the flyers. I know that we used our budget money, but it was these, it was Sean that did it, so I'm not really sure. But, so do we need to say that now, at this moment, being that we're discussing the water, attending the Waterfront Festival, or? Oh, here, she has one right there. No, because I don't think so, because he gave them all out that night.
Okay, so let me do this, let me, and you're trying to get it for the October 4 event? The Waterfront event?
Right, that's why I'm curious if that's even, that's not even probably, that's, that's next weekend, right?
Um, next weekend? Let me, let me try, let me reach out to, let me figure out if there's a budget.
Okay.
And then, let me see about trying to get it expedited printing.
Yeah, I believe it's, we have a thousand dollar budget, correct? Yes, okay.
Do we get to use all that money we didn't use last year? No, just kidding.
But as Mr. Tulok did let us know, that there are commissions that have gone in front of the City Council and asked for more money, just, just, I'm just saying, just throw that out there.
Through the chair, I'm not aware of any carryover of any unspent funds, but to, to the point of, that's part of what the work plan is for, so this is with, especially with the new, new commissioners here, this is where you all put your heads together to kind of figure out the roadmap, or the game plan that you may have over the year, and looking at any professional development opportunities, how to reach out to the community. So this is where, once again, coming together, and that's why we wanted to allocate at least a thousand dollars for each, for each commission, and part of that work plan is, and for example, the Economic Development Team, their work plan included an increase of, way beyond the a thousand dollars, and we approved that as a City Council. So if your work plan justifies what, what your expenses may be, that's something for us as a City Council that we have the ability to look at. But once again, that's putting your strategy and what your plan together is to see if that's something feasible, I will let you know that we are in a budget limitations, let's put it that way. We are, we are in our current cycle right now for this year, we do have a limited budget, so that would be something that we would definitely look closely at, but once again, if you don't ask, you can't get. So if you put it together, we would at least have to discuss it, and that's, that's worth the effort right there, so.
So I just am curious with all of you, I feel that badges and brochures are real important for us to have when we're in the community with the city, so I just want to get your take on that, to, because I'm, Vanessa will get back to us on what the cost is, but I'm sure we'll be right in there if she gets both.
Badges and brochures would definitely be helpful, I agree with that, for sure. Helps identify, I would definitely say to the layman person that's about, they don't really know. They really don't know where to navigate whatsoever, who to go to, and they kind of get in that situation where their wheels are spinning in the mud, so to say.
Do we know if there's a Unity Day? Is it on the calendar?
I, I didn't see it, and I, but I did see something that was on July 19th as Unity Day, so.
I know we had Dignity Day at Transformational Village, but that's different. I haven't seen Unity Day. It was always around Maria's birthday, so it was always September, so I didn't know if they changed it, but I didn't see anything.
Yeah, so it looks like it was in July.
That is so, hmm, that's so strange. Okay, thank you.
So the other piece to this item was having a table, HRC having a table at the events, and so the contact person for that is Shalee Loffmiller, but she is out of the office until Monday, so I will talk to her if you guys are still interested in having a table at the Waterfront Weekend.
I will not be there the first day, but I'll be there the second day. I had planned to just walk around and pass out flyers myself, so I don't know, last year Mel, Mel and I sat at the table, and it was kind of hit and miss, and I think maybe it was, you know, some people don't want to come up to the table, I mean, it's just the way they are, but if we have our badges and we have the brochures, we can at least approach them, and, but I'm all for a table if somebody else would like to sit there, but I won't be in town on the 4th, but I'll be back on the 5th.
It's October 4th and 5th? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Can she put these flyers there too?
I, I will check with Shalee about it, and I will also do my best to try to get you guys some brochures for that event.
Yeah, I think if the question is if you can hand out copies on behalf of the commission, that's something the commission would need to discuss and vote on, but, you know, you all can have the resources that you have and engage in the discussions that you want to with the community members.
So if we wanted her to have these on her table, do we need to vote on that with all of us? I'd make a motion that she be allowed to have these flyers on her table.
Yes, please, I would prefer that, but I think you can also roll it into the vote on, are you going to have a table at all? Is there interest in that? Do you all want to agree to attend this event?
Yes, I do agree. I was going to, actually, our organization will potentially have a table there. I didn't see a link come through our email, and it was strange, because we were there, or I had, I was receiving messages before, so I'll reach out to the Waterfront Committee for Tabby Moms to have a, a table at the Waterfront, for which I, we can also hold any kind of HRC pamphlets and information as well.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, so would you still prefer your own table if it's available, and then if not, agree to share a table?
Now, do we make the motion? I make a motion that the flyer for the First Response Community Forum be allowed at the, our table for Waterfront Weekend.
Second that in motion.
Sorry, and also that you're going to have a table or appear?
Yes, we will have a table.
Melvin, second, okay. Let me do a roll call vote. Demetra Stahl-Nash?
Aye.
Brandon Green?
Aye.
Courtney Davis?
Aye.
Melvin Jones?
Aye.
Jerel Maderas?
Aye.
Marissa Serafino?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Nona Cohen-Bowen absent.
Just remind everyone, we don't want to turn this into a public meeting, so please ensure that there's three or fewer at any given time at the table. If you want to organize some kind of a schedule through your secretary, you can do that, or if you want to just come as available and just notice, oop, there's four of us, one of us, gotta go do something else, that would be okay.
Is this the time to bring up this Vallejo Human Relations Commission, HRC Community Input Questionnaire? Is this going to be at that table at the Waterfront Festival available? Do you see it? Do you all see this that's attached?
Let's go on to that, that item. Item 8B, okay. Discussion, discussion of ways the commission could have intentional contacts and conversations with the community to inform them of the commission's purpose and existence, including regular presence at events or action that may be taken by individual commissioners, and development of a questionnaire for members of the public.
Is there a, in, in email, or is it possible for the commission to have an email address?
I believe there is, I believe there, isn't there on our, on the City of Vallejo website? I believe that, I think it might go to the secretary, but I believe that there is an email.
Can you pass him that brochure and let him see what our brochure's about, please? I forgot, yeah.
The only, the reason I ask about the email is whether or not, you know, like, it, right, but unless somebody is specifically looking for the Human Relations Commission and what it, like, if you don't already know, you might not pick up this brochure. So I know that the council member, you know, spoke about getting things into the Vallejo Weekly, but I'm curious if that has to be relegated to some sort of specific announcement, as opposed to like a running sort of thing in the Vallejo Weekly that, you know, not an ad per se, but something similar along the lines, like if you have, you know, questions or concerns about these areas of, of life in Vallejo that you would like to discuss or solicit, or put in input around, that you can email that email address, so that there's like a running way in which there can be input coming from community.
So I did just look it up, oh, sorry, and I did see where it says, it says right under Vanessa's name, HRC@cityofvallejo.net, and I didn't even know that that, until I just looked it up. I wouldn't know to email them people, but if they do get those emails, another question would be like, where, how does that, you know?
So I think that answers the question of the email portion of it, but I think, but, but if it's, if you're trying to go beyond that, I think that's an IT question that, that you would need to get any authorization, and I, I don't know if Manny can help provide any guidance, if, if there is an email specific one for the Human Relations Commission that they were looking to create. So that's, that's some, that's a, that's an inquiry we can kind of ask on that, from that standpoint, so. But, but from the, but from the Vallejo Weekly standpoint, I typically reach out to the Public Information Office to identify if there's anything that I had suggestions or recommendations to put in the Vallejo Weekly, I go through that team, which is run by Sharon Lund and Robert Bresseno, and so, but, but they would have more answers of, specifically of how to put regular or weekly flyers or information out in the Vallejo Weekly.
Yeah, because I think there's a difference between a thing coming up, and that's something that you want to advertise out, as opposed to a sort of standing thing in the Vallejo Weekly that solicits input from the community, that could then be emailed or delivered to the commissions, that we would have things, you know, continuously be accumulating input and feedback and things that we can discuss.
Yeah, because with the Vallejo Weekly, there may be a question of, is it an informational item, or is it an advertisement item, or is it a, is it an income generating item? So there may be different conversations that need to be had of how that gets put into those, and I'm not the one to answer that, and I would just recommend reaching out to the Public Information Office team to see if they can provide any guidance on some of that, but those are great questions to ask. So, just through the chair, a quick follow up for the Waterfront Weekly, I will be in the Dunk Chair, that this will be my third year in a row, so if anybody's out there to-
Going to be there on Sunday?
I don't know when they have me scheduled, but that would be a Tony Condit or a John Riley question that I'm-
Last John.
Yes, there you go.
Save you for Sunday. Just kidding. So I see on here we have, it says humanrelations.commissionscityofvallejo.net, so when, so-
I have to update that. Can you, can I, can I?
So when someone emails this email, you get this, Vanessa, and then you, you get us back, like if they ask you a question, then you bring it back to us, correct? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I just wanted to confirm, there are two emails that I see listed here. There's humanrelations period commission@cityofvallejo.net, and then the other account is HRC@cityofvallejo.net.
I'll, I'll confirm with IT, our IT division, our department, as to which one is the active one, correct? Correct.
No, there'll be like, we're not going to spell it all out, right? Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that answers, that answers my, my question. I would just sort of, you know, reiterate the portion of the conversation that we had earlier about if there, you know, to the extent that things can be, you know, delivered to one of those two email addresses, and to the extent that, you know, we can create some sort of a link, or some sort of QR code or something that could maybe exist in, in flyers, there are different places around the city, so that there's like this continual ask for input as it relates to, to issues, I think that's a lot easier than having to have a human presence at events, but I, because I think the frequency of seeing that there is a way to deliver feedback or questions as to various issues in the city, and to come to this commission, I think would be helpful in terms of that intentional contact and conversation with the community.
This questionnaire, when we did the Waterfront Festival, it was when Andrea, before she passed away, her and I did the questionnaires, but we had, it was a card. I don't want to make them feel like they're doing homework. I mean, this is great, though, I mean, because it asks all the pertinent questions about what they feel about our city, so I'm wondering if we can condense this, maybe a front and back, and just make it, just like double sided, is that possible? And then we can have pencils on the table, and they can fill this out at the table, and we'll put it in a box.
So I can add to that, because I drafted that. And so, so the, the basis of this questionnaire is our first engagement interaction with the community, just gathering the very basic information, right? information, right? And then each, with that information that we collect, then we're going to dissect and dive in a little bit more around, like, what are those specific areas? What common themes are we seeing, right? As you can see in the, sorry, putting my readers on, you know, there's an area around community priorities, issue, issue areas of homeless, homelessness and housing, public safety, police community relations, access to social and mental health services, fairness to education, right? We know, there's a, there's a two-by-two meeting that, that the City of Valeo and the school district have, right? And so how, what is, what comes out of that space and that conversation as it relates to the families and the students who live in our city, but also are navigating the educational system here. And so, in that, to your question about condensing, yes, I mean, it's probably just sparsed out because of how it's formatted right now, but we can put it, we can condense it to where, we, like, fit it on a one-pager, have a QR code, have it to where it's accessible and to resident, to community members at, whether it's at the Waterfront, Waterfront Weekend, or any other tabling events that we engage in, or even amongst our neighbors and et cetera, et cetera, right? Because we want to collect and what the, what that looks like for as many residents as possible, get people engaged, right? We hear the, the challenges, I think, one-off in our day-to-day work or our day-to-day existence, right? But collecting this kind of is centering it and having it locate itself in a, a space, so.
I definitely, I definitely think having this exist digitally would, would be easier, but I have a, a question with regard to either a digital form of this, like, you know, if that was, what form would that take, you know, Google Doc or, or something, and where that would be housed? And then similarly, if this is hard, issued in a hard copy format, then who would collect these? And then how would the responses from a hard copy be tabulated? Where if it was a digital form, obviously, you know, it's a little bit easier for the responses to be pooled together.
Last, when we did this two years, I think it was two years ago, the city manager's office tallied every, everything everybody said, and she prioritized where the needs were, and it was really done very professional, and then she reported back, and then we reported it at our meeting. So that was wonderful. I think that would probably be floor, I guess, I don't know who, but that's what made it so nice. So what we had was, that was on, like I said, just one big card, and I had a box, so that they felt comfortable putting it in, so we could have a box, so that they would put whatever we end up getting for that time, and they're, they're comfortable with putting, because we didn't ask them for their name or anything. If they wanted to put their name, I gave them that option, and, which, at the very end, it says, "Thank you for helping the Human Relations Commission. Listen, learn, and act with equity and accountability." I kind of would like to add, "We are here for you." What do you guys think? Just to make them feel more personable, that we are here for them. I, I still think a lot of people don't know that we're here, you know? So I would just, you know, equity and accountability, that we are here for you.
I, I think that works. In, in terms of the, the question of if this was digitized, where would those responses go, and where would they be housed?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
If this, if this survey, this assessment tool, was created in a digital form, where would the responses be housed? Like, if it was a Google, let's say, like a Google form, or some other sort of format, as the responses come in, where would that live?
So I'd have to work with the IT, my IT department, to create something.
Okay.
To create it. So I don't know, I'd have to check with them.
Okay. And, and when did we want to deploy this, and how, how, what would the turnaround for that be, I guess is the question?
So for this agenda item, it was continued from the last meeting, and one of the suggestions that came out of this agenda item, which was discussion of, you know, ways you could have more contacts with the community, intentional contacts, et cetera, was the suggestion of a questionnaire. I don't think that anyone settled on how exactly that would be deployed, that's why this is still a discussion item. Chair Davis very helpfully did a whole draft for you all to consider. If you all wanted to work on that draft, propose changes, you could do that now in an open meeting. If you had different drafts that you'd like considered, you could, we could continue it to another meeting, and you could also distribute those. They can't be done offline, unfortunately, because of the public meeting requirement. For this meeting, as you saw, we attached the draft to the agenda, and you all got it at once, and so you could share different drafts like that, or you could hash it out right now, if you decided on a form that you wanted right now, you could go ahead and distribute that at Waterfront Weekend, or you could start discussing how to distribute it. Any sort of distribution mechanism that relies on staff time is always going to be subject to availability, and, you know, if it involved building a whole new system, that would take significantly more time, that kind of thing. And then, of course, you got to worry about resources and Brown Act issues, and so, it, it depends. It really depends on what you want to do with it. If you just want to create a form and have that form available in paper copy at Waterfront Weekend, that's something you could do quickly. If it's, we really want to overhaul our distribution system, or our system for bringing in information from the public, so that we can have that be one of the ways we interact with the community, that's probably a much longer timeline.
I was just going to say, I, I think my suggestion, given the quick turnaround, would be to move forward with this draft, but to also start the process of, of digitizing it. It, it doesn't, obviously, I don't work for the city, but it doesn't seem like it would be very resource-heavy to digitize this form. But just because there's a quick turnaround, I, I think my suggestion would be that we move forward with this, if we want to do a different version of this document, or revise it. I think it makes sense to do that at a, at a later date, but I think moving forward with this, so that it's available, and then figuring out the, the question of what it would take to create the digital version of this would be my suggestion, if other folks agree.
I think that's a great idea. Because of time restraint, so I think, I think we're all on the same page, is, because that's the way the future digitized, so I understand that. But for now, because of the Waterfront Weekend, we don't want to bombard you, but is it possible to just do this on a one-page, you know? Is it possible to put the email address, and like, if they took this with them, can they email it to the HRC email?
Sure, and I'm confirming right now with the IT director as to which email is the correct one.
Okay. Does that sound good?
We can add it to it.
I, I think my, I think what I'd like to put forth as a motion is to move forward with this document, and when I say move forward with the document, I mean with producing the, the hard copy for it to be available, but also engaging the process to, to answer the questions as to digitizing it. It, I, I would assume that that does not require some, like, building of a new system, or rehauling anything, like, this could be created with Google Forms or something very simple, but I think moving forward with it in both formats would be ideal. So that'd be the motion I'd put forth to my colleagues.
We do have a platform called FormStack, but I wanted to discuss that with my IT department.
And just to clarify, was that a motion to use the form exactly as is?
Yes, I guess, with the exception of if you want to add the couple of words at the, at, at the end.
Are you all in agreement with that? Does that sound personable, a little more personable? So we motion to have this document on one page, make it one page, front and back, with the verbiage, "We are here for you" at the end? And do you want to add our email address at the end also, in case they want to, and can you please add our email address? Thank you.
I second that motion.
Take a roll call vote. Demetri Stoll-Nash?
Aye.
Brandon Green?
Aye.
Courtney Davis?
Yes.
Melvin Jones?
Aye.
Jerel Maderas?
Aye.
And Marissa Sarafino?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Nona Cohen Bowen absent. Okay, the next item. Action item 8C, discussion and scheduling special meetings for the Commission to meet more frequently.
So the one thing I will say that, in my research of, of looking at, going to other Human Relation Commission meetings, and that, most of the ones in the Bay Area meet once a month, not once a quarter. So most of the, that has been my, from my research, most of the Bay Area Human Relations Commissions meet once a month.
And I think from the conversations that we held, there's a lot more steps that are involved in order for us to have more scheduled meetings, and that's why we have the access to scheduling the special meetings, to make up that, that, that difference. And so, I think once we, we have some type of foundation and consistency, then we can move forward with having more standing meetings on the calendar.
I think this is where I come in and give you the technical aspect of it. So, so for, for everyone's understanding that may not be aware, so we do have a city charter, and the city charter, within that city charter, there's a city ordinance, which spells out each and every one of the Commissions. So from the mission statement to the purpose of it, and the number of meetings that are held. And I think the current city ordinance is calling out, I think, quarterly meetings for this. Now, even with that being said, you, you as a Commission can vote on having a special meeting, but then that, the qualifier behind that is if staff has the availability, number one, to have that meeting, but number two, to have the facility to have this meeting, because right now, you're meeting here, if this room may be unavailable for the date of the special meeting, then if there's no other facility available, then that, that meeting probably would not be happening. So it's those logistical things, but so, so if you're looking to have a regular standing, more regular frequently, frequently meetings, then that would be a recommendation of this body to come to the city council, for us to have to change the city ordinance to get to that point. So there, there is a, and this speaks to the bureaucracy of how government works, is that, that is the protocol and the procedure of how to move that forward, and, and, and believe me, you're not the only Commission that is asking that, because there's a lot of business and action that you, as a body, can be taking forward, especially as a recommendation body to the city council. So we, we encourage you to have robust conversations, and if you're feeling that quarterly meetings aren't enough, that that's definitely something that you, as a body, can, can broach upon yourselves as a recommendation to bring to city council of changing the order, for us reviewing and approving the ordinance change to have more frequent meetings. And so if you're going to go to that level, you would want to spell out specifically with a frequency, and I would defer to your deputy chief, deputy attorney, to help guide you with that type of language and stuff. So, that is the long and short of, of the request for item 8C of, of having the frequency of the meetings you're looking for.
And then, just something to add real quick. So city council is going to be meeting in October, and one of the things that's going to be on their agenda is reviewing all of the boards and commissions, looking at the ordinances. They may consider combining some, splitting some up. They may also have some suggested actions and things that would be appropriate for work plans. So it may be helpful to hear what city council has to do. They're also goal-setting, and so perhaps you could speak a little bit more to that.
Thank you so much, Deputy Chief Knight, for, for bringing that up. My apologies for not bringing that up, because that was actually brought up when I was on council as, in 2023. Not the current council brought that up, but that's been a standing item of looking at the efficiency and efficacies of these commissions and boards, because there's a lot of times, if you look across the board of these commissions, boards, to where a lot of these meetings are canceled, due to whatever issues. There's not enough staffing, there's not enough time, whatever, there aren't enough action items to even be discussed. So it's, it's, that was the purpose of us bringing in a consultant, to kind of help guide us as a city council of how to be more efficient and effective with a lot of our commissions and boards.
Would we then need to come up with a, what was it, like, to, if, for something for us to, is, I don't know, is that something that we attend, or is that something that we, would we need to have? Because I know, we could, we would have to have someone go to, not necessarily represent us, like, speak on our behalf, but just to hear, you know, what, what, what the recommendations are to, would we be able to attend that, basically? Is, and how would that work? How does that look?
Yes, you can attend, obviously, if there's more of you there than that quorum, please, different size of the room, and don't discuss. You can also view the video at your leisure. So all city council meetings and all Human Relations Commission meetings are posted online, and so as soon as that's done, you can either watch it in real time remotely, you can go and you can find the video later. So you can go and hear what city council had to say at that time. Obviously, Councilmember Matula can also come and report kind of what came out of that session. But it may be helpful in deciding when you need meetings, how many meetings you need to know what the goals are, and if you all work on a work plan, kind of what that scope of work is, so that you know when you need to meet, when it would be appropriate, how frequently.
Is there a way to know what facilities are available and what days, that way, if we can, that information can be brought, brought back to the Commission, and we can have a discussion on when, if we want to have those special meetings, to maybe look at what that can look like? Is there a way to get that information?
Yes, I would work through the city clerk's office, and then what happens is, once she gives me some available dates and times, then I would poll the Commission.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are we still scheduled for October 22nd?
Yes, that's a regular meeting.
Okay. I will not be in town, just so you know, that day.
We're going to miss you.
Let you know.
I also probably won't be in town. I think I have to be out of town for work.
Is it possible, then? Can we maybe look at November, is, if there's two of us missing? One, two, three. Well, there's still four. It's the fourth Wednesday.
I'm sorry, I thought my mic was on. I will be out of town for work, my apologies.
Okay, so I typically poll the Commission, the Commissioners, to see who's going to be in attendance, to ensure that we have a quorum. So I will poll, but it sounds like if it's only you two missing, we would still have a quorum if the rest of the Commissioners show up.
Okay, and then we can look at another date in November, maybe, or?
Yes, if you think it, if you think you need a special meeting in November, you could do that. Oh, I'm sorry. It sounds like we would still have a quorum for the October meeting. So is the concern just making sure that there's specific people here?
Mel, you think you're going to be here?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay. Okay, we'll just catch up, then.
Okay, action item 8D, discussion of scheduling presentation of iHeart Services' mission and contribution to the city.
I'm sorry, I have one question, just with regard to attendance. I know this has been able to happen with like a statewide commission, like the racial justice commission, where, I mean, a racial equity commission, where some of those commissioners, there's in-person meetings, but some of the commissioners were able to attend virtually. Has that, has there ever been a situation in which that occurs with any of these city commissions?
Having, and this is speaking from a city council standpoint, when there is an occasion that I do have to, like yourselves, either on vacation or I'm out of town on work, the, it all revolves around the agendizing. So if you are, know that you may be not available, if you inform the staff, and if they're able to, the qualifier to that is you would need to point out specifically where you would be joining the meeting virtually from, to the room of not only the address, the facility, but the actual room itself. For example, when I was at a conference in Las Vegas, I was at the, I think, the Golden Nugget, but I had to specify which conference room I would be joining virtually from. So it's to that level of specificity that you would need to inform staff of. But once again, that's a staff question, from a commission standpoint, if that's an availability. I know that is an availability at the city council level. But that, once again, I defer to staff in looking into what the qualifications are to be able to join virtually from a commission standpoint.
Thank you, council member. So I think if that is something you would like to do, if you could email your secretary, and then she can check and see if there's a different procedure indicated, and if that would be permissible.
That's helpful. Thank you.
All right, I will double check with the city clerk's office.
And I apologize, but I'm going with my kindergartner friends. We're all turning 70. So we'll be in Mendocino, but I'll give you the address.
I think there was a little bit of mention of this earlier. Is there a motion to have this presentation?
FRTC, the first respondent? Which one?
iHeart. Marissa said that she had somebody, but I was going to just reach out to the same gentleman that did the. So between the two of us, I'm assuming that we can get them to do a presentation from iHeart for us.
If you tell me, you know, what we're looking for, or what we want them to come up to present, I could talk to him. I have a pretty good relationship with iHeart over there.
You can probably, I think he has a whole packet that he did at the church over on Illinois Street. So I'm sure, I don't know what Marissa had, I don't know where she went. But so between the two of you, how do we have to present that? So just get an okay that it's okay that they come present?
Yeah, so if you go ahead and motion and vote on having a presentation and what you would like that presentation to cover, you can go ahead and email contact information to your secretary to coordinate scheduling. Or if you want to, you know, find people who are available, let her know so that she knows who to put on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to have iHeart do a presentation on their needs and contract with the city on helping our announced friends.
I second the motion.
Roll call voting. Demetra Stahl-Nash?
Aye.
Brandon Green?
Aye.
Courtney Davis?
Aye.
Melvin Jones?
Aye.
Jerel Maderas?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Nona Cohen Bowen absent and?
I think a point of clarification is the, what's on the agenda is the presentation of iHeart Services' mission and contribution to the city. I heard the term "contract" in there. So there may be an issue of if that is disclosable, so that's?
You can take out the contract. Go ahead and just follow this one. Thank you, Mr. Matulak.
So we had a future agenda item, presentation by first responders transformation, how to envision first responders' roles in the community? I'm not sure. Was that supposed to be carried over? I'm not, I don't recall. I did it.
It's been hanging out on the agenda for a while. As far as, so, once we have the deliberation session or the forum, I mean, we can come out, we can come and present to the commission. And so, and I can also too take that back to PHA around what that would look like in getting that presentation together, in case, I know we got to be mindful of how many folks are going to be in that room. And so if there are some of us who are not able to attend, or that will come and present what those findings are from the deliberation sessions and what we heard from residents.
Can we, so is the, is the action to be taken on this to make a motion for this future presentation? Since there's a, there's a meeting in October, well, meeting of the, and there's a commission meeting later on that month. So I guess the question is, is, one, do you think that by the next commission meeting that it would be possible to present some of the findings, since that comes after this? And if so, then would what we'd be voting on now is to agendize that presentation for the October meeting? And then I suppose if there's not a readiness, then we could delay?
That's a good question, especially considering there might, there's going to be probably more information captured from that meeting. And so that does present a potential timeline, a tight timeline for us to collect and synthesize that information. And so that probably would be at a, I don't know, I don't know if we want to do a special meeting, call for a special meeting to have that presentation versus waiting into the new year to hold, have that presentation. So it's, I think the commission, we should decide if whether or not, what that would look like.
So should we just make a motion to agendize like a status check as to the presentation and as to whether or not there might be the need to call a special meeting for this presentation at the next commission meeting?
Sure, so you could just go ahead and vote to have the presentation on the agenda at a future time, whenever it can be scheduled. If you actually want to include a special meeting in there that probably needs to be tweaked a little bit from what it is currently. So I don't know if you would prefer just to put it on when you can put it on, which would be a fine vote, or if you'd rather agendize it for consideration for a specific special meeting for next time, and then we could carry that forward for a vote. So we could carry it forward for October, for you to discuss a specific special meeting date to put that presentation on, if you would like.
I think I'd like to make a motion for the latter that you described.
The problem for the next, it's the day before Thanksgiving, or it's the day, or the, let's see, it would be, one, two, three, day before Christmas, so.
All right, as I understand the motion, the motion would be to agendize a discussion for a special meeting, not to establish it, so that at the next meeting, we talk about whether or not there is a need to hold a special meeting as to this item, and then we could discuss it. That's my understanding.
And that was the point I was going to bring up, what Commissioner Green brought up is, ideally, you would want to have a thought-out reason or purpose of what that special meeting went for, especially if there's an action item that needed to be. But if it's a conversation or a discussion that needs to happen, that's up to the body to determine if you, do you really need a special meeting just for that? Or can you just carry that over to the next scheduled meeting? So once again, that's part of the open for discussion that you as a body get to determine amongst yourself. It's just a recommendation that when you do feel like you do need a special meeting, purposely think, do you really need that meeting? Or is it just to hold a meeting? Because from a lot of my professional experience, to hold a meeting, just to hold a meeting, you may be, you're tapping into resources. And once again, everybody has, everybody has a family life and a personal life that they need to address. So once you schedule meetings, that kicks in a whole bunch of other things that every individual, every commissioner, and every staff member needs to account for. So just keeping that in mind of when you do think the idea of a special meeting may be thought of, just make sure it's, our recommendation, make sure it's thoroughly thought out. Because we do enough special meetings for city council, and if we had our choice, we would not be doing them, but we have so much action and items that do need to be determined by our body, that it's, whether we like it or not, we need to have a lot of these special meetings. So, but whether a commission does, that's a different conversation.
When is the next regularly scheduled meeting after the October one?
It'll be in January.
So then, should we make a motion to add the discussion of the first responder, responders topic to the regularly scheduled meeting in October? And then we can just discuss it there as an agenda item. And in that discussion, we can have, make some determination of whether or not the presentation could be made in January, which would not consolidate the timeline and give some space there, and not bump into a bunch of holidays, and not bump into all of the logistical questions for a special meeting. So I think the motion would just be to add this as an agenda item to the next meeting.
Right, to include discussion of scheduling specifically and whether to have a special meeting?
No, no, just a discussion of when to schedule the presentation on?
Understood, and thank you, council member. That's helpful. I also want to bring up something that I've said before, but doesn't seem to be utilized. We do have a two-step process for putting things on the agenda. We have to agendize to agendize. One way to speed that along a little bit is if one of you wants to email over to the secretary and please copy me for, I'd like to put this on the agenda for agendizing to agendize, add it as a future agenda item. You can do that in advance of the meeting, and then you've already got step one. So you don't have to wait three months to get to step one and then step two, if that makes sense.
So are you, because this is yours, Courtney. So on the 22nd, you'll be able to report out a little bit of what happened on, at this function that's coming up. And then if, like he said, to put it on the January, do you think that will give you enough time to have it? And then, so let's just go ahead and put it on the agenda, agendide, can we agendize to agendize to put it on the January meeting? And just that way for her to do her report presentation, then?
I'm sorry, I missed that first part.
Well, she will be ready in January to do the presentation for the first responders. So can we agendize to agendize to put it on for January's meeting?
I mean, we've got it as a future agenda item, so you could just agendize that presentation for January's meeting.
Okay, that's what we want to do.
I was going to say that the fact it's actually on this agenda already, this is the second step of the agenda, of the second step of agendizing something on there, if that makes sense.
So the motion would just be to set the presentation for the January meeting?
Yeah, and I don't know whether it needs a formal motion or not, the fact it's, you've noted it, and you've kind of informally agreed that it sounded like as a commission, you guys want to do that. That's up to the deputy attorney if a formal motion needed.
I like it all to be a formal motion, if we could.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to place the first responder presentation on the January commission meeting.
Second.
Take a roll call vote. Demetra Stahl-Nash?
Aye.
Brandon Green?
Aye.
Courtney Davis?
Aye.
Melvin Jones?
Aye.
Jerel Maderas?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Nona Cohen Bowen and Marissa Sarafino absent.
I was just about to apologize for all that talking around you, but I guess we got to it, so.
So through the chair, I don't know if you guys had any other future agenda items you wanted to bring up, but I just wanted to, number one, congratulate, especially the new commissioners on their first meeting and getting through that. I felt like I was at my own city council meeting with a great robust conversation you guys were having. This is, and this is, this is the purpose of what you do as a body, is to have these discussions for, in a public, open meeting like this, for the city, citizens of Vallejo, to see what you do as a body, and to understand and kind of grasp a lot of what you do. And I think you guys just touched the tip of the iceberg, because there's a lot more that this Human Relations Commission can do. And you, especially the new commissioners, you'll realize that there's a lot more that weren't even, wasn't even discussed today. But I would like to offer my services, now that we do have a formal new chair and the same vice chair, I would like to offer my services to help. You can reach out to me to help run the meeting, since this is technically in your hands now of how these meetings should be run, and not having the secretary or the staff to kind of go through this. And it's a simple reading through, just simply following the agenda. But there's certain procedures and protocols that just need to be followed. And it's kind of Robert's rules of how parliamentary procedure type of stuff. And I'm happy to give you some feedback, guidance, and suggestions of how to move that forward. But now that the chair and the vice chair are officially in place, then I'm assuming man will have their seats ready to go with all the bells and whistles of how that works. And for those that may need some guidance of how to work the buttons and the speaker and all that other stuff, because there's ways to, if you want to request to speak, there's a button on there to, so that way the chair can see that, and that they have that digitally available for them to see who's in that speaking sequence of that. So it's just those little logistical things that I'm available and happy to help for the next meeting when that comes about, so.
Thank you for all your help. I want to make a motion to adjourn. And I really want to welcome both of you. I think it's wonderful. I'm so excited. You have no idea. I wasn't ready to continue, but I'm excited now. And if you have any question, Kaitlin, she's our go-to. I mean, I call her probably too much, but anyway, she's very, she's the one who tells us what we can and cannot do. And Matulak, he's always there for us. And Mel, thank you for all you do, and I appreciate all you do, and you too, Courtney, all of you.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:47. Thank you.